Good evening. Welcome to the Bogota Board of Education regular virtual meeting, January 19th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Call the meeting to order. Would you please stand for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice to of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Bogota Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in Bogota Borough Hall, communicated by letter to the record, filed with the Clark of the Borough of Bogota, and posted on the Bogota Board of Education website. Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Present.
Mrs. Coles?
Here.
Mrs. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Miranda?
Here.
Ms. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Ortega?
Present.
Ms. Rickett?
Present.
Mr. Chavez?
Here.
Mrs. Van Bruin?
Present.
We have the court.
Thank you. Also present is Mr. Kennedy, our superintendent, Nathaniel Simon, our attorney, Elsie Luca, our student representative, student congress representative, Ervin Neffsall, our school board attorney and business secretary, and Elizabeth Ruiz, our assistant business secretary. Is Elsie with us this evening? I don't see her, but if she does attend, I'd like to be sure that we always include her her time for her to make comments under citizens' comments. All right, moving on, may I have a motion, please, for a hearing of citizens on agenda items only?
Motion? Lisa?
Second Chavez.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rickett?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Bruin?
Thank you. I see one hand up. Mr. Kennedy, would you like to address that? Or, oh, I see a couple. Mr. Kennedy?
I think you're muted.
I'm muted?
No, no, Mr. Kennedy's muted.
Oh.
Derupo? Derupo, can you hear?
Yeah.
Did you have a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, I raised my hand the wrong time.
Oh, okay, no problem.
My fault, my fault.
No problem.
Admin? Admin?
Hi, this is Connie Carpenter, 42 Hill Street. Just one question, Mr. Kennedy, 119-21-06, that's a new one, I see.
Yeah.
I see that it's ratified, so that's cool, but can you explain why the bill for 2018-19 school year, was that just not paid, was an oversight, or is that never in the dates?
No, it was, it's been battling out in court, actually, who was actually responsible for the student because we felt that the student wasn't a Bogota student because they only moved in for a short amount of time and then left. And it was a homelessness case that the county soup originally said another district had to pay, and then they fought it. And then they went to court, and now we recently just lost, Nathaniel, correct me if I'm wrong, it was the Department of Education, right, Secretary of Education ruled that the student belonged to us, so we had to pay for it.
Yeah, it was, it went to the Office of Administrative Law, and an administrative law judge ruled that the other district should not be responsible for Bogota. We appealed it to the commissioner, and the commissioner felt that Bogota was responsible and not the other district.
Makes sense. So it was a homeless, it was a homeless child?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Citizens' comments? I see no others. May I have a motion to close citizens' comments, please?
Motion.
BC?
Second Chavez.
Second Chavez, thank you. Any discussion? Now, Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rickett?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Bruin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We'll now have the superintendent's report. Mr. Kennedy?
Okay, so today, we welcome back students into our buildings with our hybrid model. The numbers weren't that high. We had 68 students in Bixby, 45 in Steen, and 20 in the high school. We will continue with the hybrid model. So tomorrow, we will be all virtual, then Thursday, Friday, a new group of students come in. This is one of the reasons why the Department of Health felt it was safe for us to open because of those small numbers. So even if it's helping 115 kids having a place to go and do their schoolwork, we felt it was important. Blue ribbon signs have been installed at Steen School, so if you drive by, you see in the front of the building and inside the building, we also have a flag that we're going to be putting up too, so that'll be good. Winter sports just completed their first week of practice. Games are scheduled to start next week. We're not allowed to have fans for basketball games, but we will be streaming them live on our YouTube channel, so we'll have those links available to everybody. And then finally, just so everyone's aware, Murphy signed a new executive order last week waiving senior testing requirements, which is a big deal because we were testing some seniors still to get them their graduation requirements, so those were waived. And now also teachers' SGOs have been waived in doing their evaluation, so just two things to be aware of. Testing is up next. They said that is more of a federal mandate, and they were waiting for the next couple of weeks that we might hear if they are going to cancel testing again, so we should know more in the next coming weeks, and that concludes my report.
Right. Mr. Kennedy, would you perhaps comment on, I know there was a little confusion last week with who was supposed to give you the proper authority for the Department of Health, perhaps you could, for the community, you could clean up how that was resolved?
Yeah, so we deal with the Bogota Department of Health, Sam, I always have a tough time saying his last name, but he directed us to the Hackensack Hospital, Joanne is who we deal with. So after I spoke to Mr. Viola, he understood that we were in contact with the Bogota Board of Health, and they directed us to get our information and marching orders from Joanne. So he said we were on the same page, so the next day, we spoke, and he understood the process that was directed for us to clear with the Department of Health.
Thank you. I know there was some concern last week, so I think that we were doing, you weren't following all the right steps, so just so everyone knows. Next up, we have approval of the minutes from December 15th. Nathaniel, can I defer to you for a moment, please? Should our new board members recuse on this since they weren't present?
There really is no legal requirement that they recuse, but it's how they feel about voting. If they feel that they don't have enough information to form an opinion, then they could abstain.
Okay. All righty, so on that note, if new board members understand that, may I have a motion, please, on to accept the minutes of December 15th, 2020, both open and closed?
Motion, Idalia.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Lisa.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes?
A question as well. I was absent that day. Now, if I recuse myself and all of the new board members recuse themselves, does that not give us a quorum?
That, that is, you know, a difficult situation, but I think that we had said last, I had once given guidance in the past that just because you were absent, you are not legally required to abstain. It's really a matter of personal choice. But if five of the board members abstain and four say yes, I'm going to hold that those minutes pass because that's all we'll ever get. It's not like someone is objecting because they feel something's inaccurate. They're just abstaining because they feel they weren't there to, you know, for accuracy. But if four of the other members who were there vote yes, because we have to have approved minutes, and nothing's going to change, you know what I'm saying? So as a matter of process, we have to have approved minutes, so if that happens, I'm going to rule that the minutes pass.
That clear to everybody? All right. Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Stay.
Ms. Montgomery?
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Abstain.
Ms. Rickett?
Abstain.
Mr. Chavez?
Abstain.
Mrs. Van Bruin?
Yes.
We have the court.
That's
It's a majority, so
That's fine.
Motion. Carry.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. We'll address item, agenda items 119-21-01 through 119-21-05. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Amanda.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Eileen.
Thank you. Discussion? All right. Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rickett?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
You're muted, Jose.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Bruin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And then to new item on the agenda this evening, which Mr. Kennedy just explained the reasons behind this, 119-21-06, may I have a motion, please?
Motion, Amanda.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Was that you, BC?
It was.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rickett?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Bruin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on to personnel, we have agenda items 119-21-07 through 119-21-11. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
BC?
Yes.
Thank you. Second?
John.
Thank you, John. Any discussion? With no discussion, all right, Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yeah.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rickett?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Bruin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right, moving on to finance. Now, some of the information is new on this, so if there's any discussion or questions, we are looking at agenda items 119-21-12 through 119-21-26. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Idalia.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Eileen.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, no discussion. Ervin, if you would call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rickett?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Bruin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, does anyone have a committee report? I know we've just begun the year, so if not, if I could move on to old business, I would just like to confirm, I've spoken with Matt Lee, our field service rep from school boards, and he can join us on the ninth. I've told him about 7:15, 7:30, basically immediately following our work session, so he'll be ready to go at that time. Ervin, you could advertise for that. I guess that we would be having a workshop come in during the meeting, because that will be held publicly. I also got in touch with the representative from Strauss ESMA, our policy company. I thought it might behoove us to have someone come in from there and give us a little bit of an oversight, especially for new board members on working with some of the policy, how to research things and so forth. I didn't hear back from them, but I'll keep you posted if that comes to pass. Unless you're not interested, you know, in doing so, we'll discuss it when I hear further. All right, also under old business, at this time, we, we have had discussion in closed session last week, and Mr. Kennedy was issued a rice notice so that we could have further discussion this evening. He's requested that we do so in public, so I need to add a resolution, please, so that we can have that discussion. Nathaniel, do you have a proper wording how we can add that? It would be number 119-21-27?
Um, be it resolved to add the discussion of the superintendent's contract to the agenda?
Thank you. May I have a motion to move it, to add it, please?
Motion, Amanda. Second, Amanda.
Who was the first? I'm so sorry, John? All right, any discussion? This is just to add. All right, Ervin, could you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rickett?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Bruin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, may I have a motion to move agenda item 119-21-27?
Motion, Amanda.
Thank you.
Second, second, BC.
Thank you. Any discussion? No, all right, Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rickett?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Bruin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right, continuing on the agenda items, new business. Does anyone have any new business? No new business? All right, if I could have a motion at this time for hearing of the public? A motion, please?
Motion, Miranda.
Thank you, Frank. Second? Thank you. Any discussion? All righty, all in favor, Ervin, roll call, please?
Kathy, do we have to, do we have to vote on it? Or do you say aye, all in favor? Do we have to vote?
You can do all in favor.
All righty, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I had that conversation with Ervin today, to be sure he was doing it all the right way. So, all in favor, any opposed? All righty, so I will open the floor to comment, citizens' comments. Please state your name and address. Mr. Kennedy? Yeah.
Mr. Kennedy, you're muted.
Thank you.
Mr. Sterling, you're, we can see your, we can see your, we can see you because you're not updated. You're muted.
Who is?
Mr. Sterling.
Oh.
I am muted now. Are we okay? Yeah. Oh, thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is John Sterling. I'm the president of the Bogota Education Association. I've also been a mathematics teacher at Bogota High School since 1988. It has come to my attention that the Bogota Board of Education is going to discuss the terms and conditions of Mr. Kennedy's employment at tonight's meeting or in the very near future. When I initially heard this, I assumed that the board wanted to publicly announce the rehiring of Mr. Kennedy and thank him for the wonderful job he has done with a lengthy new contract and a considerable raise. But since we currently have so many new board members, I wanted to make sure that everyone was made aware of the current state of affairs in the Bogota School District. Things have never been better in our district than they are right now. Of course, this is due to the efforts of so many people, teachers, administrators, the Board of Education members, past and present, parents, community leaders, and our wonderful students, all have contributed to our district becoming the envy of so many districts around us. But the majority of the credit belongs to Mr. Damian Kennedy, our superintendent and our leader. Mr. Kennedy has brought stability, dedication, compassion, and professionalism for the title of Bogota School Superintendent. The character and leadership skills that Mr. Kennedy has demonstrated during the most difficult period in the history of education is awe-inspiring. The best leaders in history have never claimed or never claimed to have all the answers, but they listen to those around them and make excellent unbiased decisions based upon the information they've collected. Mr. Damian Kennedy is one of these special leaders. This past summer, I participated in over 50 state and county meetings pertaining to each school district's plan for reopening schools during the pandemic. The Bogota School District was the envy of the entire county because of the way that Mr. Kennedy and his administrative team handled the planning and implementation of the reopening. In fact, many of the final meetings in late August, NJEA field reps or presidents of other Burton County schools would begin their statement by saying, other than John Sterling and the Bogota School District, what problems continue to exist in your reopening plans? You see, everybody had already heard me say over and over again how lucky I felt to be the president of the Bogota Teachers Association and have a great board to work with and a great administrative team to work with. We had open, honest discussions. Not everybody gets what they want, but we worked toward a plan that was mutually beneficial to everyone. You know, many other presidents contacted me, emailed me, and called me on the side and said, John, I need some advice for some better reopening plans, and I said, I have no advice on it. It's not not credit me. It's a credit to our superintendent, Mr. Kennedy, and the team that he put together comprised of both community members, teachers, and administrators working together. So, you know, I just want to say that I've always felt blessed to be part of Bogota, but I've never felt as much pride as I do now. I never feel as lucky as I do right now to be a teacher in such a great system. I therefore urge the Bogota Board of Education to act quickly and extend Mr. Kennedy's contract before we lose him to a bigger district willing to pay a lot more. All right, so, thank you so much for your time and attention to this, and I appreciate you listening to my words of encouragement. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Mr. Derupo?
Hello, Board of Education. I appreciate your time. I really wish I, you guys could see me, and I can, I see you, I wish you could see me. But I'm also going to start off with, with, with Mr. Sterling said, I'm also shocked and surprised at this possible action. It's actually kind of disappointing, to be truthful. But I'm going to, I'm going to tell you my thoughts, because I've been here a long time, so as one of the longest-tenured educators in this district, I came to Bogota High School September 1996, just missing Mr. Sal Montagna, who was superintendent for nine years. In my 24 years here as the athletic director, we've had 11 different superintendents. The strength in any education is its stability and continuity. We have had none of that in my time here. This district needs what I call a career guy, someone who will not use this job as a stepping stone, but rather who wants to be here, day in and day out. I honestly believe you found that person in Mr. Kennedy. Board of Education, in particular the four new board members, I have worked in public education for 37 years. I worked for countless vice principals, principals, superintendents. I've seen a lot, and I can honestly say Mr. Kennedy is one of the best and most supportive administrators I've ever worked with in my career during these last 11 years. He truly cares about the kids. No matter where I've worked in my career, I consider myself a Bogota guy. I was not born and raised here, but this school, town, and people always have a special place in my heart. Even though an outsider at first like myself, Mr. Kennedy is also a Bogota guy. He bleeds the high school purple and gold and elementary blue. He's a perfect fit for this town and school district. This town doesn't want a political superintendent, rather superintendent who's not afraid to get his hands dirty. Mr. Kennedy is a coach with outstanding communication and leadership skills. It is with those skills that he's led us through this pandemic, one of the most challenging and difficult times in public education. His calm demeanor is a big reason for that. He is well-respected by his students and staff at the high school and the elementary schools. With his exceptional qualities, in the future, I believe Mr. Kennedy will lead our district, Bogota School District, to its highest levels of achievements in terms of academics, athletics, facilities, among other programs. I, as a longtime employee and a longtime athletic director, I without hesitation fully endorse Mr. Kennedy, one of our own, as a superintendent in this school district. I hope you see it that way also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Connors?
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Board members, I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank you for your dedication to our kids. The children of Bogota are lucky to have you as representatives for our town. I too are, I, I wanted to speak to each and every one of you to urge you to rehire Mr. Damian Kennedy for several reasons. I understand the process. I understand that his contract is up in June or July, and I do understand that some of you would like to shop around and see who else is out there. And I've heard through the grapevine that, you know, other people that are in district are being considered. I wanted to impress upon you, we have an all-star pitcher here. We do not need to go to AAA and find a prospect. We have someone that has tried and trued, shown that he has capability to do this job. My mother always said, if it's not broken, you don't have to fix it. So I'm not sure where our thinking is at. I do understand that you want to see what's out there and have a fair and open process as regards hiring our superintendent for the years to come. I respect that, but I do want you to consider a few things before you make your decision. Number one, we have a blue ribbon school in Bogota for the first time in many years. Bixby had a blue ribbon school a bunch of years ago, and we're very proud of Bixby, Steen, we're very proud of you right now. And I understand that Mr. Kennedy is not in the classroom, he's not doing the teaching, he's not the kids that are taking the test. But it's his leadership and his, you know, vision for our, for our district that has gotten that blue ribbon school for us. When things go wrong, he gets the blame. When things go right, he should get the credit too. Secondly, we've had probably one of the, you know, craziest years in memory. I know in my 52 years on this planet, this is the craziest year that I've seen. And without a doubt, to echo Mr. Sterling's comments earlier, Mr. Kennedy has shepherded us through this terrible, terrible COVID, and he's made all the right decisions at the right time. He's known when to shut the schools down, when to take back a little bit and take those couple of weeks around the Christmas time to make sure that our kids were safe. take those couple of weeks around the Christmas time to make sure that our kids were safe. We've had very, very small, tiny situations compared to other districts. Our kids are safe thanks to Mr. Kennedy. I also would like to remind people that Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Chang and other people were responsible for bringing the pre-K three program and implementing it in Bogota. The pre-K three program has been a huge success. Governor Murphy is trying his best to get to Bogota to take a photo op with Mr. Kennedy, but he can't get here because of COVID. The program is booming. We have wait lists. We have, you cannot buy a house in Bogota because there's houses being snapped up left and right because people around this area have seen that we have something called a pre-K three program. And that program, it enables parents that have young children to not pay for childcare, which is a huge advantage for young parents trying to make ends meet and pay them mortgage. We also, to reiterate what Mr. DeRupo said, we need consistency. And Mr. DeRupo said that we had eleven superintendents in the last twenty-plus years. I think it's more, but that number sounds about right. We've been hiring and firing superintendents in Bogota forever. Most of them lead to lawsuits. I'm not suggesting for a second that that's what's going to happen now, but we don't need any more foolishness. We need to have consistency. Mr. Kennedy gives us that. And the last thing I would like to say is, I respect anyone else that's interested in this job, but Mr. Kennedy has proven that he is capable of doing this job, that he has the skills, that he has brought us through this terrible pandemic, and I respect all of you. I know all of you individually. I think you respect me. There's been some other people that are coming on or have been on. And, you know, I mean, when people like John Sterling and Brad DeRupo are talking and telling you this is the right thing to do, then, you know, please take our words that we're not being partisan. We're not playing political games. We're putting the kids first. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. All right. If I could just remind our speakers, if we could try to keep it to five minutes each per policy, I would be grateful.
Ms. Connolly.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, how are you? My name's Jill Connolly. I'm 204 West Morningside Avenue in Cresskill. I'm the supervisor of pupil services in the district. And I just, I'm a little, I also dismayed that this is even kind of a question, and I hope it's not. I hope we're kind of wasting our breath right now and, you know, the right decision is made. But just to give you a little background, I was born and raised in Bogota. I attended kindergarten at Dewey School and graduated from Bogota High School in 2001. I was actually on the Board of Ed for two years before I got married and moved out of town. And then I came back and I was a social worker in the district since 2009. And I came, when I was in the Bogota District, we had a lot of turnover when I attended the schools, and I saw a lot of my peers leave and move away. And that whole idea that Bogota wasn't a good school district, but I knew how special it was and I knew what a special place it was, it could be, and it is now. And I ran for the Board of Ed and wanted to see Bogota School succeed. And I came back to work here because I love my experience in Bogota, and it really is a special place. And it was soon after I started working here that I realized what the problem was. Bogota has not had any consistency in probably thirty years. Organizational change takes three to five years minimum to take effect. Every new director, every new superintendent has a new focus, a new agenda. It takes time to get to know the district, to identify the issues, and make a difference. Since I started working here in 2009, I think I've had four or maybe five superintendents, and I had four directors of special services until I became the supervisor in 2017. I don't know how, as a district, we can ever move forward when we're constantly starting over. And when Mr. Kennedy was named superintendent, I breathed a sigh of relief, thinking he's here to stay. He's worked in this district. He knows this district. He likes it. He gets along with everyone. He's likable. He wants to put in the work. And we got to work, and we have an amazing administrative team right now, people that I can say really understand how special Bogota is. And I've seen so much progress, and being part of that progress has been amazing. And I think we owe that progress to Mr. Kennedy because he listens to us as administrators. He listens to the teachers, to his parents, and the students. I will never forget our discussions about needing a general education pre-K program because we only had special ed, and our kids needed mainstream, they needed mainstream peers. And that grant opportunity came along, and he sent me an email, and my reply was, "Let's do it." And there are many superintendents that will just let that go past their desk and not done the work because it was a lot of work, believe me. But look where it has gotten us to this day. And it happened because he wasn't afraid of putting that work in. And the thing I like the most about Mr. Kennedy is that he doesn't really owe anything to anybody. He does his job based on what he thinks is good for the students and what he thinks is good for the district. There's no background noise for him. It's just straightforward. What you see is what you get, and he's going to make those decisions based on what's good for everybody. I was on the board. I know it's really hard. You hear a lot of different angles from a lot of different people. And what frustrated most being on the board was the politics. I really hope that's not what's happening here right now because it'd be heartbreaking at this point in my career and all the work I put into this district to think that politics are coming into play and that there's some unknown reason, which I very can't wait to hear you guys elaborate your thoughts about his coming on board with us again and can't imagine why he wouldn't. But I really just wanted to make it known that I think the best interest out of our students in our district would be to renew Mr. Kennedy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Jennifer Graham.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Graham. I'm at 20 Hickory Street in Dumont, New Jersey. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Jennifer Graham. I am a high school mathematics teacher at Bogota High School. I came on today to give a different perspective. I'm coming from the other end of the spectrum, meaning this is my first year teaching in Bogota High School. This is my first year in the district. I've been a public school teacher for seventeen years. I have three children in another town in Burton County Public School System, and I'm coming from the Park Ridge Public School System, which is a very high-achieving school district in Burton County. That being said, I don't know Mr. Kennedy personally. I have no personal ties to Bogota. However, I can tell you, after working seventeen years in public schools, I have never, to this moment, been a happier staff member in a district, nor have I seen higher-achieving, happier students. And I'm coming from Park Ridge. What I've noticed this year is that Mr. Kennedy does something that a lot of different superintendents that I've encountered, they do not do. He puts the students first regardless, regardless of all other factors that may be pressuring to appear, especially this year, as if business were as usual. What we're seeing around the county is superintendents pushing their staff to pretend as if business were as usual. Business is not as usual. I'm at my own towns' board meetings every month, fighting the fight for the district to acknowledge that we are in a worldwide pandemic. Meanwhile, at work, I am getting weekly emails from my principal and my superintendent telling me that we are not just educating the children in mathematics, we are educating the whole child, particularly in a town like Bogota. Because of those emails and that support, the irony here is the academic rigor is higher than in the neighboring towns where all they're focusing on is forge ahead in that chapter, get that chapter done. Conversely, here in Bogota, we are doing what we said we would do for the past decade, which is prioritize social-emotional learning. No meaningful learning can occur if our students or staff members are anxious, stressed, or spread out. Mr. Kennedy knows this, and it's trickling down to our building administrators, and it's then trickling down to the staff and to the students. We have been advised to show our students grace. They are meeting with their counselors. These students are thriving in a world in which high school education seems unthrivable. All of those factors and my seventeen years of experience drove me to come on this meeting. I don't know what perspective the Board of Ed has, but I am on the front lines in the Bogota School District. I am seeing the kids' faces every day. I am getting the emails from Mr. Kennedy. I am getting the emails from my supervisor. I have no personal investment in this. This is only me expressing my very strong opinion that under Mr. Kennedy, this district is thriving right now. And I can only imagine how we will continue to thrive once we're not in these circumstances. I strongly, strongly suggest that all of you take into consideration why staff, parents are coming on this meeting tonight after having worked our first day back in person, after having our own children running at our feet at home tonight, why we're so inclined to come on this meeting. We don't need another political appointment or hire or whatever's going on behind the scenes here. If you want to do the right thing, if you were elected to the Board of Ed to do the right thing, listen to those of us on the front lines here. And from the front lines, I'm telling you that we are in a good place and we need to continue on this track. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker, name and address, and please consider the five minutes.
Lynn. Lynn.
We're not.
No?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, Linda Matrakis, 225 Walnut Avenue. I'm a citizen for thirty-five years, almost thirty-five years in Bogota, a parent whose children have gone through the school system, a teacher for eighteen years. I'm here to really concur with all of the previous speakers who talk about Mr. Kennedy, first of all, as a kind, wise, intelligent, and thoughtful superintendent. He also has an amazing team of Mr. Chang and all the principals and special services. And having survived, and I can say this, as a parent, as a teacher, of having over, you know, I would say at least eight or nine superintendents and bosses, it's, you don't realize the stress that it causes for teachers, in turn, for families. And especially right now, we don't need any more stress than we have right now in the pandemic. It makes perfect sense that we, as a community, support Mr. Kennedy because we need the continuity. Why? Because, first of all, it shows that we support his vision, and his vision includes the pre-K. Having Mr. Chang as our coordinator, who has brought in so many grants that despite some pushback from other board members in the past, he stood his ground, and we've had a team that is really working for every child from pre-K to 12th grade. I also want to just confirm that we do have a blue ribbon school. As a teacher, as a parent, as a citizen, having someone that is continually there supporting this, everyone in the community. Mr. Kennedy has done that with grace, and he does listen. You can go, and his office is open, and I know from other friends who are teachers, they don't have that ability. So he is there for every person in the community. I also want to just point one thing out. I know, Ms. Van Buren, you mentioned that the board members have to go for training. So to me, if you're telling me that being a board member is a very big responsibility, and I really applaud each and every one of you because it is an awesome responsibility. But with that responsibility takes education and training. And to be able to really understand what type of superintendent you need for this district, you really need the training first before you really vote on that. With that said, I'm not down in your abilities, but I also would like you to think about having someone continue in the position that Mr. Kennedy holds because, first of all, he will give you that strength and continuity. He will then guide you because he has that guidance and he has that support. And I just ask you really to think about your perspective, what you're thinking about when you make this choice. Mr. Kennedy is really a wonderful superintendent, and I am so proud to be part of the Bogota School. And I can say that I've heard many years of someone saying, "Oh, you work for Bogota," and they give you that look. I don't feel that way anymore. I'm proud, and I am proud to say that I'm part of Bogota, and I am proud to support Mr. Kennedy and his team. You're doing an amazing job, and thank you so much, and I appreciate your time, every single one of you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Lynn.
Kay Rogers.
I think she wrote something in the chat. I don't know if she's still on.
Mrs. Rogers, you there?
I think she, yeah, I think her comment said.
Yes, hi, good evening. Asia Burnett, 220 Larch Avenue. I am a parent. I've been here for almost eleven years and also a New York City school administrator. And
I want to say your address, please.
I did.
I'm so sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm kind of emotional and pretty upset about this because I'm just not understanding how we could consider or even be a thought to not consider Mr. Kennedy. A few things, I've been here almost eleven years. I think we've had several superintendents. There hasn't been any consistency. And as an administrator, I know that this job is not easy. As a parent, I see it, you know, from a parent perspective, that this is about our kids, about them progressing. When I first got here, Bogota District was okay. And I came from a great school district in New York City, and we started to improve. In the last couple of years, we've improved tremendously under his leadership. And I'm going to tell you something too. At the height of the pandemic, when we were dealing with the issue with George Floyd, and I was feeling really upset and emotional about it, I wrote an email to all the administrators. Mr. Kennedy got back to me right away. He spoke to me personally on the phone the next day. We had a conversation. You don't get that from everyone. He had any excuse in the middle of the pandemic to say that he didn't have the time, that he would get back to me another time. No, he took the time to speak to me right away. So for us to come here, and those of you who are new, I'm not sure what your decision is or what you're thinking, to change leadership. And as an educator, I know that our children need consistency, and that's what they have not received. We owe it to our children. If you came here tonight with one thought, I really urge you to change it. You need to give him the opportunity and the chance. We are proud of our district now. You hear the teachers are proud. The parents are proud. My daughter told me how much she loves Mr. Kennedy because you can talk to him, he listens, he's consistent, he's hardworking. This is not a political thing for him. He knows the community, and he wants what's best. So for us to think otherwise, it's unbecoming. I don't even understand how it could ever even be a thought. I mean, I would be so disappointed, so, so very disappointed, and just wondering what is the thought process that we could even give a thought to letting go, as Mr. Connor said, what a star player. So now there we go, down the line. We earned this blue ribbon, and where are we taking it now? Where are we taking the Bogota School District? Because Mr. Kennedy has brought us far. He was the vice principal, and I know how hard that job is because I serve it now. He moved up to be principal and now moving to be superintendent and showing his leadership. And his teachers stand for him, and not many teachers come to the table for their superintendent. And not many teachers have a great relationship with their superintendent, and that shows that they were here, they were standing here, willing to come forward and speak up for someone that is great. So, that being said, listening to your people, the people of Bogota, we deserve better, and that better is Mr. Kennedy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Amara.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Tara Amanna, 8 Hunter Street, Saddle Brook. So I am the high school counselor and have worked with Mr. Kennedy since 2011. He was actually one of the administrators that hired me when He was actually one of the administrators that hired me when he was the vice principal. For my position, we work very closely with administrators, and we deal with a lot of heavy-duty issues and high-risk cases. And Mr. Kennedy was always amazing to work with. And one of the things that I always saw when we would be talking and when I would pull students into his office is that he genuinely cared. At times, administrators brush off the students because they're too busy. And he was and still is the type of administrator that will drop everything to talk to our students because he cares. In addition, I think he genuinely cares about our staff. He started a lot of wellness programs to make sure that we were happy and we were in shape physically and mentally, and has given us so many opportunities because he cares about our well-being, too. Because he knows that the happier we are, the better we are to all of the kids in Bogota. In my experience as an educator, some of the best educators I have seen in my position are the ones that genuinely love their job and care about the kids, not caring about the benefits that we get or our salary, or for people like me, how I get summers off. The ones that care are the ones that do great, and I think that Mr. Kennedy has shown that from the start, even until now. As a superintendent, I don't work with him as much because now I'm working with our current principal and VP. Yet he still will always pop into our guidance office and just check in and see if things are okay. I know that if I need something and I can't go through our VP or principal, Mr. Kennedy will always listen and will always help me with some of my upperclassmen. And I think that consistency is extremely important, and I think it is very, very crucial, especially right now during all of this, that we see no changes and let a man that genuinely loves this district and everyone that works for him and all of our students continue to build the empire that he is working on and will continue to work on. Thank you.
Thanks, Tara.
Mrs. McDonald. It's got unmute. Mrs. McDonald, you there?
Her hand's not raised anymore.
All right. Christine.
Good evening. My name is Christine Horder, and I live at 145 Beechwood Avenue. I have seen every point of this district, from being a student to being a substitute teacher to now being a parent. And I am floored that this is even a discussion right now. As a student, we had a lot of changeovers in administration, which was a crazy time. As a substitute teacher, Mr. Kennedy was the vice principal at the time and always approachable with any concern that I had, whether it be a staff member, a student. Nothing that I said was never taken to heart. As a parent during this pandemic, he has taken the brunt of every complaint from a parent, and he has been on the front line a hundred percent. He is completely reachable with any question that I have. He genuinely cares about this district and about his students. He is not someone that just came into here. He has come up through our district. And now you have a pre-K program that is thriving that both of my children have gone through. You now have a blue ribbon school with STEAM. And I really hope that you are listening to all the parents, all the teachers and the staff, and all the members of our district that we are fighting for Mr. Kennedy. That the fact that we even have to fight me is appalling. I really hope that the new members to this Board of Ed are taking this into consideration. I hope that this is not a political agenda, and I really hope that you're listening to everything that we have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol. Carol. We could see you. You got unmute.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Me, Mr. Kennedy, okay. Good evening. My name is Carol Mesa. I was a former resident of Bogota, 141 Park Place. I am the seventh and eighth grade counselor at the high school. I could reiterate what everyone has said, but I am not going to do that. I will tell you that I served where you have served. I have been in the district for quite some time. I moved into the district when there was turmoil. There are several of you on the board who I served with. I really, really cannot believe that this is even a discussion. Those of you who were on the board with me watched, as all of the folks who came before me, watched the unsettled adminis- the unsettlement of the administration, the turnover, the unruliness in many of the schools because it was no leadership. And yes, the political agendas of some of the board members. I would hope that as we stay on, there would be some light shed on why we are even trying to discuss why Mr. Kennedy is not someone we want to rehire. The things that he has brought to the district, I mean, I have watched him from vice principal to principal to superintendent. And the new programs that he has brought to the district along with our other administrators are totally amazing. They are things that, I was here thirty-one years. They are programs that we had talked about, that we hoped about many, many times. The, all of those kinds of things were presented and shot down for various reasons. Some, I have to be honest, ridiculous. Some, there was just such back and forth on the board with divided agendas and who wanted this and who had their own personal thing happening. But I think the greatest thing right now, I don't even know if it's in the discussion phase, from the time that I was on the board when my kids were little, I have always said, and as a middle school counselor, I have always said that our middle school children are, they are an entity in and of themselves, and the greatest thing we could do for Bogota is to get a middle school. And for me to be retiring and watching that this is actually or may actually happen is probably the greatest, greatest joy that I can have. And with all of these new programs, and those of you who are new on the board or new to Bogota, I know that you cannot appreciate this number of years where every time you turned around, there was a new superintendent, there was a new vice principal, there was a new principal. We hired them for this reason. We couldn't find someone who was, you know, who would stay or whatever it may be, whatever the agenda was. I think it was Jill, I think everybody said. The lack of consistency in Bogota, it has been heartbreaking. And for me, the greatest joy, the greatest joy to see right now is the consistency between our superintendent and our administrators, both at the high school and the elementary level. And I believe consistency and wonderful leadership by folks who are approachable, Mr. Kennedy being one of those, and all of our administrators, you can approach them, you can speak to them, whether you're a parent, whether you're a staff member. To me, there is no greater gift that you can give to a district than consistency. So when I heard that we were even thinking, for whatever the reason may be, of not renewing Mr. Kennedy, I was just shocked. And I thought, I guess it is the right time to go because I could not live through another eighteen years. And it wasn't eighteen years, you know, I've been working for the district for eighteen years, but I couldn't live with the ten years or so again where we're going to go through, and we're going to waste thousands of dollars and hire per diem folks. And as, again, I think it was Jill or someone, or maybe it was Derupo. They all come in with their own agendas. I understand it. They come with their own background. But we have consistency here. We have good leaders. We have folks who really, really care about the kids. And I really implore you, implore you, and many of you I've worked with, your children worked with you, that you really think long and hard about your decision. And you listen to everyone, listen to all of the feedback, all of the information, and make your own choices in terms of, and decisions in terms of this move, this decision. I think that Mr. Kennedy is wonderful for the district. I think that he has hired extremely wonderful staff, and I do ask that you make your decision. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Carol.
I'm just trying to get her off. Admin. Someone is, it's admin on the.
Hi, this is Connie Carpenter again, 42 Hill Street. I don't even know if I can say anything more or better than what Mrs. Mesa just stated. But being that I'm a finance person, I'm just going to talk about the process. I don't know if everyone knows, but I've gone through this several times, being on the board for many, many, many years, along with Kathy. It's a three-month process, and in the interim, you have nothing but chaos and uncertainty. It's also a cost factor to the borough. And as you all know, that I'm a tax freak, and I don't like spending money that we don't need to spend needlessly when you have the right person in the right spot. This gentleman, I see everywhere I go. As you all know, I attend almost all of the functions of school. So I see him at football games, home and away, snowing, raining, sometimes with his children. He goes to football games, cross-country meets, volleyball games, basketball, wrestling, cheering competitions. I saw him there. That was amazing. Bowling, track, concerts, plays. Lot of places that, sorry to say, I don't even see most of the board members attend. So I just want to reiterate what everybody else had to say and state that not renewing Mr. Kennedy's contract will be a disservice to the principals, to the teachers, and most over to our children. Thank you, and please think about this.
Thank you, Connie.
Stephanie.
Hi, Stephanie Carl. I live at 324 Leonia Avenue. Everyone before me has made very valiant points. My son attends STEAM school, and my daughter is currently a student at the high school. When my children were in the lower grades at STEAM school, they lost a great principal due to behind-the-scenes issues that we parents were not aware of. And it really saddens me that we're even discussing removing a superintendent that is there for his students, staff, and parents. I hope that our voices will be heard, and that our student body will not lose a superintendent that supports them and builds them up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that just Mel?
That's what I see.
So Mel. Mel.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Camille Giacomelli. I live at 149 Beechwood Avenue. I'm not an educator. I'm not an administrator. I'm right now just a grandma. I was a parent. I had four kids go through the system. And I can tell you that in all my years in the education experience with my kids and grandkids, Mr. Kennedy has proven to be the best at every seat he fills. I just don't understand where this is coming from. Everything is going great. The kids are happy, the teachers are happy, the parents are happy, grandmas like me are happy, and you guys are just willing to blow it all. I don't understand it. We actually have somebody that wants to stay in this district, not somebody who's looking to sue us and get rid of us and hates it and uses it as a stepping stone to go somewhere else, actually somebody that wants to stay and make this his home, and you're trying to drive him away. Unfathomable. I don't understand. You really should take a lesson from Mr. Kennedy and listen to what everybody says and hear what they're saying, and take our consideration into your consideration. He's so reachable. I don't know if any of you realize how much of an asset he is to our district. I don't know. I'm so nervous right now. I'm so upset right now. I really just want to jump through this phone and grab these by the heads and shake you and say, wake up! You're going to lose a fantastic man. You really are, and I really hope that before you make any rash decisions, you reverberate what we have been saying this evening and listen and really pull apart everything we're talking about and keep him, keep him. He wants to be here. He really wants to be here. He wants to make a difference. He has made a difference. Don't blow it. And don't hurt all of us who have put you there to be our voice. Listen to our voices, be our voice, and keep this great man in our district. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Molina.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. Kathleen Molina, 164 Howard Street, Dumont. Bear with me, I'm a little nervous. I want to say thank you for giving me a chance to speak. I wasn't planning on this, but I feel compelled. I just want to say that I was brought into the district two years ago. I know a lot of people are talking about inconsistency over the years and experiences with different superintendents and different leadership. But I was lucky enough to come into a wonderful, new team of leaders that really brought me in and let me come to the table and voice my opinion and ask me for, and continue to ask me for frequent updates and really participate as a team in helping shape what we now know as Bogota Public Schools and continue to work on. So yeah, two years ago, I was brought in to help build and administer the preschool program. And I do want to say thank you for all the positive comments about that tonight. We're working really hard to make Bogota proud. During that time, I've had the pleasure of working for and with Mr. Kennedy on the initiative. And just so you know, we have one hundred and seventeen preschoolers currently enrolled. And that's during a pandemic with virtual, mostly virtual learning, just a little bit of hybrid in there. But these parents are hanging in there because they know, they know there's quality, they know they're supported, whether it's Chromebooks or meals or just support from all the staff. I'm just really proud that they're all hanging in there, and we're all trying to get through this together because they know we're all in this together. And next year, we have one hundred and fifty projected openings, which is just a testament, and this is all happened in two years. It's really something that I can't, I'm grateful every single day to be a part of. And Mr. Kennedy has been, you know, such an important leader during this time to be willing to bring that program in and then to support it in the way that he has. It's just, it makes me warmly proud to be a part of it. While I could take up the entire five minutes pointing out individual achievements and actions that he's taken, I think it's best to just focus on one, and that's his constant and unwavering commitment to the students of Bogota. Mr. Kennedy has time and time again proved that he's not just a leading administrator, but an advocate for the educational, social, physical, and emotional well-being of every student in the district, every last one. I'd also be remiss if I didn't point out that somehow he makes room to also care for every one of his employees, always, but especially during this past year of uncertainty and emotional turmoil. Mr. Sterling pointed out the meetings that we had over the summer. It wasn't just the summer, it was all through the spring and the summer and the fall. But how many volunteers, how many optional meetings that all this stuff came in on because they knew their opinions that were valued and their contributions were valued as a part of this entire Bogota team. they were, their opinions that were valued and their contributions were valued as a part of this entire Bogota team. And in many ways, those meetings became sort of a support system. We all were a part of this big support system that helped us get to this point. So I'm going to sum it up, and I just want to say that I continue to hear the comments urging for consistency, especially during this time, and, and I'm pleading for the same. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. I don't see any others. Oh, one more. Oh, two more.
Samantha Smith? Yeah, Sam Smith? You're unmuted now. Let me try someone else. Trina Olivo?
Hi, everybody. Trina Olivo, two-two-eight Maplewood Avenue, Bogota, New Jersey. All I can say is wow. It must be really uncomfortable for Mr. Kennedy right now, but it's all merited, sir. You are absolutely remarkable, and I have to say thank you. I've been a resident of Bogota since two thousand and three. I have seen, I think, about five superintendents in this term here. And those of you up there know that I am an active participant in community. So I've been a part of PTA, PTOs, presidents, chairpersons, you name it. There has been so many changes in this time of my living here in Bogota. When Kennedy came in, in two thousand and ten, it was a relief, a big, big relief. From then on, all we saw was structure, structure at his vice principal level, structure at his principal level, and now structure at the superintendent level for all schools of Bogota. I get that everybody has to do their due diligence, and the contract is up, and you need to take a look at it, understandable. But it's merited that we all get a chance to speak our minds over this gentleman and all the accomplishments that he's done. I have three children that have gone through our school, one bachelor, graduate with a bachelor's from Montclair University, one junior in Caldwell with a full ride, and a freshman who is, had some difficulty at the beginning of this pandemic with school. And Mr. Kennedy and his staff have been nothing but helpful in trying to do what needs to be done to get this young man back on track, as I'm sure he has and they have with all other students who are having difficulties as well. There's no question that he is the right man for the job in my mind. And I bet if we were allowed to be in person, that room, that cafeteria would be so hot and packed right now with the supporters for this man. So everybody said all these great things, and it's wonderful. I'm glad to hear that I'm not the only one that thinks this way of this man that's come in, come on board to Bogota who's, knew nothing about Bogota and wants to stay in Bogota while others haven't wanted to. So for whatever reason that you need to review his contract, do your due diligence. Thank you very much for doing your part. I appreciate it. And I have the most faith, utmost faith that you are all doing the right thing. But I thank you very much for letting everyone have their say. Staff, it's wonderful to hear how one, how they feel about him. But as a parent, kudos, because he's done the right thing from day one, day one, and that's back in two thousand and ten, when I first met him there, not, 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 not this superintendent tenure. So thank you very much for letting me be heard, and I hope we get to hear your, your opinions as well as somebody else commented on, about how you feel about our superintendent. I think he's done a great job. Thank you all for letting me speak.
Thank you so much. I believe we have Samantha Smith back.
Okay, I think you guys can hear me now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay. So my name is Samantha Smith. I live at one-ten Market Street in Saddle Brook, New Jersey. And I want to start off by just saying that this public speaking thing is freaking me out a little bit, but I feel very strongly about Mr. Kennedy remaining in his position. So I have a lot to say. This is my first time speaking. My name is Samantha Smith. Some of you may know me because I am a fourth-grade teacher at Steen School and a soccer and basketball coach for BHS. I've been a teacher in the district for five years now, and in my time here in Bogota, I have worked under three superintendents. Believe it or not, in my first year alone, I had two superintendents in my first year. I am here to concur with what all of the previous speakers have said. Mr. Kennedy has been a presence in the hallways at all of the schools, has a great rapport with students and staff, and regularly attends extracurricular activities. Mr. Kennedy has been one of the biggest supporters of our sports teams. Even when parents have been unable to attend games because of work or other personal obligations, we could always count on Mr. Kennedy to show up. This goes beyond just being a fan at sporting events. Mr. Kennedy and his team of administrators were also dependable during the coronavirus pandemic. Most administrators would resign when faced with times like these. Mr. Kennedy handled the pandemic in a way that other schools in the area have not. I am friends with many other teachers and other districts who envy the way our district has handled the pandemic and how Mr. Kennedy has always considered the feelings of teachers and staff members. Even during a time of uncertainty, Mr. Kennedy stayed strong and always prioritized safety. In addition, I'm, I am proud to be a teacher in Steen School, which is a blue ribbon school. I believe our school was a recipient of this award because of the hard-working teachers and students under the leadership of strong administrators. Anyone who understands anything about children knows that consistency is extremely important. Mr. Kennedy comes to our school to reach the kindergarten students. He attends our assemblies and has even created a wellness program to help teachers become the best version of themselves so that they can serve the children. This should be about the students. Clearly, parents, teachers, and students are happy with Mr. Kennedy. I wish everyone could see all the great things that Mr. Kennedy has done for our schools. By considering anyone else for this position, you are breaking the consistency for the children and are potentially giving away a gem for Iraq. Thank you.
Karen Rogers?
Good evening, Karen Rogers, at four-sixty Elm Avenue. I apologize. I didn't know how to put the microphone on earlier. I had to wait till I got home for one of the kids to help me. I did type a long chat, so I'll keep my statement brief. I've been involved in the school for many years. I had five children go through the system and worked with a lot of different teachers, administrators, volunteers. And when I first started in the school district, Bogota is pretty much a laughing stock. But I always had hope that it was going to get better. And that's why I chose to be involved, PTO at the elementary school, the high school board member. And I must say, towards the end of my children's school time in the high school, before they graduated, I had the pleasure of working with, with Mr. Kennedy. And I began to see the school district turn around, because at that point, I was only in the high school. And I saw great things happening. And then I saw, as a principal, the wonderful things he does, did, excuse me. And now as superintendent, how he's turned our school district around. And I have to laugh because it was maybe a year after I had been out with my last, that I saw him and I heard all the wonderful things that were going on. I said, yeah, of course. Now all the good things happen when my kids are no longer in the school district. But we still stay involved, and we're still in Bogota. And now we're proud to say that we're from Bogota and we have a blue ribbon school district and how things have turned around, and that's under the leadership of Mr. Kennedy. And so I wanted to thank him for all that he's done for us. I know we speak of consistency. That was like a trigger word when I was on the Board of Education. Sure, you want someone to be there consistent. However, when you have somebody who's awesome at the job and is leading our district forward in so many positive ways, consistency is key. But somebody good and consistent is even better, right? You can't get any better than that. And so I ask you, like Trina had said, to do your due diligence and review, because that is part of the job. But please make the pros and cons. And I'm sure you'll find that the list of pros are far outweighing any cons that may even appear on a column, which I doubt there would be, because Mr. Kennedy has done such a marvelous job for our town, our kids, our parents, our teachers, and anyone who has the pleasure of interacting with him on any given day. He's done nothing but good things for Bogota, and I want to thank him for all he's done for our kids. We truly appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Karen.
I think that's it.
Alrighty. With no more hands being raised, my, I have a motion, please, to close citizens' comments.
Motion, Amanda.
Thank you. And Lisa, Lisa, thank you. Any discussion?
Kathy, if I could just ask that after we do have discussion, if we could possibly open it back up to public comments, if anybody would like to ask any questions to our board members, if that would be okay. We've done it before.
If it's, if the board would like to do so, that's fine with me.
We have a consensus, anybody?
Yeah, I would second that. No problem.
What I, yeah, what I would say is, um, let's vote on the closing of the current public and then have the board discussion. And then if you want to make a motion, Lisa, to reopen to the public, that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
It's okay with you. Great, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, Ervin, could you call the roll, please?
Call in favor, going out to hearing of public?
Hi.
Hi.
Question, all right, question, Carrie?
Thank you. Alrighty. Now I'd like to move on to the discussion of the agenda item we've added, which is one nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-seven. First and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone for coming forward and speaking. I can assure you, we have listened in earnest. I, I've written notes all over every piece of paper I have on my table here with your names and comments and things you've said, and we've taken all of that to heart. But what I'd like to explain what brings us to this point this evening is, and the discussion we're about to have, Mr. Kennedy was rised. We had a meeting last week in closed session. But as is his right, he's, he has requested that this was in public this evening, correct, Mr. Kennedy? That was per your request?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, here's the situation that presents itself to us. Mr. County, Mr. Kennedy's contract will renew automatically. I wrote this down, so I'm going to read it, so forgive me. Mr. Con, Mr. Kennedy's contract will renew automatically for three more years as of February first, twenty-one. That's in about a week and a half, if the board takes no action. That is by statute. There's no options, no choices. The law says if we don't take some sort of action by February first, the contract would automatically renew from July first of twenty-one through June thirtieth of twenty-four with the same terms and conditions as the current contract. I think it's important to note that per policy, which we have for the district, which I've also written upon this evening, it basically requires us, and I'm going to apologize, it's buried here in, in all my notes. It basically states that the hiring of the superintendent, rehiring, appointing, whatever the phrase you'd like to use, is the most important job that a, that a board member can do. And in light with that, we want to make sure that we're doing it the right way. We do have four new board members who just took their seats on January fifth, literally, what, three weeks ago. They were elected by a significant majority of, of the public to speak on behalf of the public, to make changes, do whatever they see fit. They were entrusted with that responsibility. It just came to our attention last week that Mr. Kennedy's contract would be rolling over as of February first. So this is sort of a, an eleventh hour action on our part. And again, there's nothing more meant here being done than just to do our due diligence, as was quoted by a couple of people, and thank you for bringing that up. In line with that, we need to make a decision this evening. Otherwise, we are making no decision at all. That leaves us two options, as I see it. If we vote to non-renew Mr. Kennedy's contract, which is still in effect through June thirtieth, twenty-one, this allows time for the new board members to take their training, as some people have said, to do their due diligence, as Trina pointed out and was also repeated by, I believe, Karen, and to be able to vote with full confidence in their actions. I'm sure they have all listened to everything everybody said. There was a lot of compliments, a lot of good facts tonight. That is not being discounted. But the action would be, this action for non-renewal is not a personal issue, although it obviously appears that way with Mr. Kennedy, but it's the only way that we can allow the four new board members and the full board to have honest and sincere and educated discussion on continuing the contract, which is no reason why that won't be considered. If we do nothing tonight, then we have denied the four new board members the right to have any chance to be educated into the accomplishments, the qualifications, et cetera, of Mr. Kennedy. It's, it's just jumping into the blind, if you will.
I think that's a very naive statement. And I think that instead of wasting our time trying to non-renew Mr. Kennedy's contract, I think our time would be much better well-spent on renewing his contract and going and negotiating the terms of his new contract. And that can all be done by February first, had we had all agreed upon that last week, instead of renewing and thinking that the grass is greener somewhere else. I mean, I appreciate, I just, I would like to take a moment just to acknowledge the fact that there, at one point, there were a hundred and fifty people in attendance, and I think that's phenomenal. And had we been in person, that number would be incredibly overwhelming to see and feel that, that presence of people, and it would make this even more real to see how many people actually support Mr. Kennedy. And I, I want to applaud, there was, I, I think, over twenty, twenty-five comments in the chat that we received as well. And I want to thank you for also commenting and, and, and talking about Mr. Kennedy, everybody. And I just want to add to that, what everybody has been praising Mr. Kennedy and on all of the things that we've already accomplished. I would like to present the things that we would like to pursue and things that we, that he has, has planned for us to move the district forward. And I think it's really important to acknowledge those and, and recognize those and when we're negotiating his, his new contract, instead of bringing in someone new and having to start from scratch all over again. I've been on the board. This is my fifth year now, and this is my, and Mr. Kennedy's been my third superintendent. And it's finally, we finally have the consistency where all of the administrators are happy, all of the teachers are happy, the students are happy, the parents are happy. I, I don't understand how, how non-renewing Mr. Kennedy so that we can think about it is, is appropriate. And just to, just to list a few of those projects that we're, that we're planning on moving forward with, one of them is the new temple that we just purchased, that we have many, there's different options that we have available currently. And those, that includes possibly having a special education program in the school where we could potentially have out-of-district students come in and, and potentially earn some revenue there. We also have a career technical education program that we're in, that we could possibly put in that building. I mean, everybody in Bogota knows that the real estate is limited here in Bogota. So the, the fact that we purchased that building and Mr. Kennedy had the foresight to, to grab that building when it became available to us was, was, it just shows the, how dedicated he is to furthering our town. The other thing is, we just put in four hundred and twenty units down at the, by the river, and we're going to have an influx of students, especially now because our school district is phenomenal. Everybody's going to want to come to Bogota. So, so we have secured a lease with St. Joseph's. So now we have, I, I believe it's twelve or fourteen classrooms with a cafeteria, with a gymnasium, where we're not putting our students in trailers, which is, you know, that, I can't even with that. Anyway. The other thing is, you know, I mean, there's words, there, there's talk around town that, you know, yes, we are, we are thinking about doing a referendum, which would enable us to possibly do some more additions on Big Spie, maybe fixing the gymnasium, that also adding in addition to the Steen School. And like Ms. Misa said, having a proper middle school where the kids will be separated from the high school, which I think everyone in the district will appreciate, and the students especially, and they will, and they will in themselves thrive, you know, and also improving our fields down at the bottom. I mean, you know, we've come so far. And Mr. Kennedy has been, and, and behind all of these, and, and he's not. And, and he's not, and I know that he's sitting there right now, he's incredibly uncomfortable receiving this praise because that's the type of man he is. He's very humble, he's very modest, he doesn't, he doesn't ask for the accol, the accolades. He just wants to do a good job, and that's what we need here in Bogota. So I just have two, two questions, I guess, that I'd like to pose to the new members um and ask their opinion on this. It's, it's like, one of them is, what do you think a new superintendent would be able to bring to our school district that Mr. Kennedy has not? And, and if eh, I wrote it down. And, and if, instead of wasting our time, instead of looking to another one, what are the questions that you have, that you want to ask Mr. Kennedy that will help us improve the district even further? And instead of going out and looking for someone else? Those are the two questions I have.
Eh, if I might, before I answer either one of those questions, and I don't have a problem with either one of them or anything posed by, anything we've heard to this point, I really would like to ask Kathy to finish, because I, I, I would hope to convey to everyone that today is the nineteenth of January. We sat in, in this role on the fifth of January. And if anyone thinks that this is something that, that is easily embarked upon in such a short span of time, I, I, I would have to say, let me finish, please let me finish. Thank you. I would have to say, speaking only for myself, this is incredibly overwhelming. For one, it wasn't my understanding that this was a referendum on Mr. Kennedy. As I understood it, we were discussing the contractual process. And I appreciate all of the feedback that I heard tonight. But most importantly, I would like to hear Kathy finish telling us about this contract process, because that's what I thought we were talking about. And this went into eh something I'm greatly appreciative of having heard, because I don't think a hundred and fifty-five people would have ever gotten on to tell us those things otherwise. So I want to understand, what is it that we're actually discussing? Because I wasn't under the impression that this was a referendum on Mr. Kennedy. I was under the impression that this was a referendum on the contract process itself. So this feels a little different than what we were, what I thought we were discussing.
So Mr. Kennedy is the contract, and, and just to your point, just to your point about, just to your point, just wrong, real quick. Just to your point about being, about, about being brand new to the board. Yes, you guys are brand new to the Board of Education, but you are not brand new to the town. You all have been in the town, and your kids have been in the schools, and you guys have been through the whole process, and I've seen you at board meetings.
Not this process though. So in all fairness, Amanda, this process is new, incredibly new. And a February first date, it was incredibly new to all four of us. Again, I'm only speaking for myself, so I would hope that if, if I'm speaking out of turn, that someone would correct me. Yet and still, we are here, and we're looking to get through this process. To have a conversation last Tuesday, to be told that we, we need to discuss this in earnest and make a decision, I have to be flat-out honest, was a bit much and a bit overwhelming. So we asked to move it forward to this date. To do this in this forum, I'm okay with that. But I would like to hear, what is the process that we're discussing? Because I don't have a problem with Mr. Kennedy, or the, or the, all that he's accomplished, or all that you all have accomplished. What I do have a concern with is a process with a window this tight. For a group of folks to have a discussion with little to no, all this commentary that we heard from these folks tonight is wonderful. Because up until the start of this meeting, we did not have this much context. And that would be unfortunate to make a decision without it. So if Kathy could be allowed to finish helping us understand the context in which we're to be working, I would appreciate that. And then I don't have a problem answering any other questions.
Alright, if we can, if we can get back to the order of it. The simple processes that needs to be addressed tonight is the window of opportunity. I stumbled upon miss, that deadline in Mr. Kennedy's contract literally last week at the eleventh hour before the meeting. I found that. We were not aware in advance that the contract had to be renewed by February first. We have four new people who have, are on this board and want to do their best to do due diligence, to vote knowledgeably. I know for myself, I was forced into a vote when I was first on the board, and what I was forced into went down like a lead bomb, and I always promised myself I'd never do that again, and I wouldn't expect anyone to do that. Everyone knows I ask too many questions. I ask too many questions because I want the knowledge before I make a decision. And I think we owe that out of respect to our four new board members. The non-renewal is strictly something we need to do. Mr. Kennedy's contract is still running through June thirtieth. Nothing is being disrupted. But by non-renewing, which is what we have to do by law, this was put into place when tenure of superintendents was eliminated. They changed the, the rules, the guidelines. It's now tying our hands. Again, because we didn't, we found out on accident, it might have just rolled over without us even knowing, but I did manage to find it. So what, what the issue is tonight, if we vote to non-renew, Mr. Con, Mr. Kennedy continues in his contract, the new board members have a chance to, obviously to digest everything that's been said tonight, not dismiss it. Obviously, some people think we're just dismissing it. Not at all. It's being digested, it's being listened to. If we, if we do not vote, if we, if the vote, if there's a motion to non-renew, and it does not pass, that means that our four new board members have just been said, oh well, too bad, we don't want you to learn anything, just, you know, come along for the ride. I don't think that's right. I think the four new board members need to be given the time to do it properly.
I think you're manipulating these four new board members, Kathy. And I think, I, I, we all know that you don't like Mr. Kennedy, and that you didn't vote for him the last time. And that is not true, that is not true. Listen, uh this is out in the, in the public, I, you know, this is usually what happens behind closed doors, people, we have these arguments. But Kathy is not a fan of Mr. Kennedy.
I wasn't a fan of the process, Amanda, let's just use it.
No, that's not true. You tried to like, you tried to backdoor some guy in at the last minute in the last meeting, and you were just saying yourself how you were upset that uh the la, when you joined the board member, that you were new and that they made you vote for some. I mean, that's just absolute ridiculousness.
I can tell you what it was for. It was for an ITV room, an interactive television room. Alright, I can tell you that people on the board, yeah, wait, what, but yeah, we wasted thousands and thousands of dollars.
Kathy, can we have order, can we speak one at a time, please, to give our opinions?
I'm getting overwhelmed myself.
Okay.
We have, we have an, we have the issue on the table. Let's take all the personalities out of this. Let's take into consideration, we do nothing, the contract renews, we all just go home.
You keep saying we do nothing, we don't have to do nothing, we can just renegotiate Mr. Kennedy's contract. Renew Mr. Kennedy's contract and renegotiate it, or we can non-renew and, and then go out and look for a new applicant, which is a terrible process, and we've been through it. The, the, there, Lisa, myself, Eileen, and you have been through it, you've been through it more than we have. And you know that the process is terrible. It takes three months. And that three months, nothing that we, that I just discussed about moving forward hardly ever gets done. Because now Mr. Kennedy's got to reapply, he's got to sell himself back to us. Eh, which, which, why would you sell, why would he have to sell himself back to us when we've, we have already, we already know what goods we have? Why not just renegotiate the contract and move forward?
May I ask a question?
Yes, BC has the floor.
May I ask a question? If we, if we renew, are, do we, are we forfeiting the ability to renegotiate the terms of that contract? At the outset, at the outset, Kathy, you said if we do, if we renew, we can't change anything about the contract. And I want, I want to be clear to everyone listening. I said before, and I will say again, the process is where I have issue. To be walking into the door with a February first discussion of this magnitude is overwhelming and feels inappropriate. Without these hundred and fifty-five people coming here and this chat board continuing to roll up with an additional comments, we would not have had this context last Tuesday, or at all, I'm hoping, eh, eh, I would hope, I'm wrong about. If these folks hadn't come forward, do we forfeit the ability to negotiate this contract?
No, Betsy. Betsy, can I have the floor, please? Betsy, we negotiate the contract with Mr. Kennedy. You're on the negotiate committee, okay? All it's saying is that you're going forward, okay? And the negotiating committee sits Mr. Kennedy, and you guys negotiate a contract with him. Whether or not he takes that contract, he could turn around and say the contract's no good, and he'd leave.
And should that happen?
You guys have the right to negotiate a new contract with him.
Lisa, to interrupt you, as, as a board, we actually negotiate, we actually negotiate all, all of us. Because he, it's not just the negotiating committee, just, just to, just for clarification.
Right.
Right, so essentially.
To us, they negotiate, they bring it to us, absolutely.
Essentially tonight, Betsy, we can decide whether we want to renegotiate Mr. Kennedy's contract. We are not locking ourselves into any contract with Mr. Kennedy at this point. Or we non-renew Mr. Kennedy, and then we have to go out and go through the whole process of putting out the RFP, or I don't know what, what the name of it is, and, and then getting in applicants and going through the process of getting a committee. And, and it is a very tedious and long process. Um, and I mean, you know, I, I appreciate where you guys are coming from. I don't want to sound like I'm like insensitive to that.
I, I wanna, I don't, I don't, and, and I really don't want to cut you off, Amanda, but I do want to say this. I only speak for me. So I know we keep saying, you guys, I want to be clear. I speak for me. I don't speak for anyone else. Any questions I'm asking are questions I have and only I have. And my questions, again, center around the, the, this whole process. I made that clear before, and I want to make it clear again. I, I just feel like it's a lot. And, and you know, I, I, I'm sure for the teachers, for folks to say that they're nervous, that they feel uncomfortable, that i- i- it's even more means that we have to get this right. And what eh, what we were discussing before just felt like, okay, here we are, you have to make a decision. And, and that isn't, that, that, that just, like I said, like before, just doesn't feel appropriate. So, you know, eh, eh, should it come to, we negotiated a, a contract, and it's something that he isn't interested in, what is the process at that point?
Nathaniel, perhaps you should jump in here. I think Nathaniel needs to give us legal advice in that regard. That's.
Well, eh, you know, i- it's difficult from, I don't want to give legal advice because negotiations of a contract are something that are usually protected by the attorney-client privilege. But in terms of the process, um, the reason that there is a February first date is because the statute states that every superintendent, because they are no longer eligible to get tenure, no matter how many years they are in a district, you must issue them a contract of three to five years. I think I explained this to you before. The notice provision of non-renewal, most superintendents and boards negotiate anywhere from a three-month to a six-month provision of notice because of the difficulty, if you give notice of non-renewal, of getting a replacement. Which is why a lot of districts wind up with interims or these per diem people. Because if the, if the notice, let's say, were in April or May instead of now, and you decided to non-renew, you'd never get a permanent superintendent by the termination of his contract. And I would say to you right now, you might not be able to do it even if you notified him now. Um, but if, if you renew him and go into negotiations on a new contract, it's basically a meeting of the minds. I mean, you know, it's like any contract negotiations. You, now, some of the clauses, as Kathy was saying, are statutory. Every contract that a Board of Education enters into for their superintendent, assistant superintendent, or school business administrator, requires executive county superintendent approval. And you can't put something in a contract that the county will not approve. And the county has a template, and it, there's not very much you can negotiate, really. It's mainly, you know, salary and a couple of the benefits. That's really it.
Is the February first date statutory?
The date, uh, the date, the statute says that you can give no less than one month for every year of the contract.
Right, but February first is clearly outside of that.
Right, and you're allowed to, as I said, there are some boards who have even earlier dates than that. Um, there are some boards that have had one-year dates, which, you know, I think are, have been ruled that that is too long. The, the standard is about one month for every year. So if you have a five-year contract, you have five months. You have a three-year contract, you have three months. In this particular case, Mr. Kennedy, at that time, asked for February one, and the board agreed, and the county didn't object to allowing it to be that date. So that's how we wound up with February first.
Understood. Thank you.
We can also, if I may, if I may, please, if I may just make a statement. If we non-renew, it doesn't mean we have to decide right away if we're going to go out and post. We can have time to have discussion, let the new board members learn. Forgive me if I keep referring to new board members. Let's, we can, it gives us time for discussion and proper action. It's not being shoved down our throats at the eleventh hour.
Why do we have to keep calling it a non-renewal? Why can't we just say a renegotiation?
That's what has to be done. According to all, he has to be notified of non-renewal. That's what has to be done. Do it any other way.
Let's do discussion now. I mean, Betsy, what I wanted to say, last time we had um negotiations for superintendent, I'm gonna tell you, it was a complete, it was hell. My life was hell for, for months. And we went out, we interviewed many people out of the district, in the district. And it got quite nasty, um, a lot of fighting. And at one point, we actually were gonna hire someone out of district. And before we, we're gonna vote on this, we had a majority for this person to get hired. We put it out to the public, like we did tonight. And overwhelmingly, teachers, parents, students stood up one after another and pleaded with us, please keep this in district. Please hire somebody who's been in this district. You know, it wa, at that time, it was Mr. Kennedy and it was Mr. Iglesias, okay? And they wanted to keep it in district, someone who's been here and put in the time. So at that point, we went back to closed session, and we, we fought, we discussed. And we came with the conclusion that we hired Mr. Kennedy. You know, it, like I said, we, it was a long process, and we listened to the people. And I think we should listen to the people again next time. And last week we spoke, and you guys all said that you wanted to talk to Mr. Kennedy. You wanted to look over his evaluation, and I hope you guys solved that. And like, do you have any questions for him tonight? We're here tonight. I don't think we need to go and wait again. I mean, why are we waiting? He's here, let's talk to him. If you have any questions, he's got a plan, he's put it in that. Eh, you can't argue that the district hasn't gone forward. It has gone forward. And again, I know you're, I, I know you're new board members, like Amanda said. And I know it's hard eh, eh to vote, but as she stated, you guys are parents, and John, you were, you know, you went to the school, you know Mr. Kennedy. So ask him the questions right now. Let him answer your questions, so we could move forward and make a decision tonight. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kennedy? He's here tonight to answer your questions.
I don't, and um, I, I.
Okay, I see nobody has any questions.
I'm speaking. The, um, Mr. Kennedy, I do appreciate you sending me um those, those evaluations. I do appreciate them. But I didn't, I didn't have questions for him, because we had already met ahead of that discussion. So that wasn't necessary. What we didn't, what, again, speaking for me, what I didn't understand was how this process seemed to be, you know, that February first date, and it seemed to be extremely tight. Do this, or else we have nothing. And that just, that didn't feel right at all. Eh, and I said that before. To make a decision of that magnitude based on, basically, you know, he's a great guy, didn't seem to be what you should be ba, bas, basing a, a job decision on. I hire him in, in, in council and work with folks all day, every day, eh, eh, it just felt completely out of the norm. Um, coupled that with the evaluations were not what I was used to seeing, so I, you know, I didn't have questions related to them necessarily. Beyond, you know, there were comments in some and not comments in others, but eh, you know, that's, that's neither here nor there. These folks came out and provided way more context than I think any evaluation could ever uh encapsulate. Again, my, my last question, and I'll give the floor to the other new folks, is if we, whatever we do, do we still have the ability to negotiate through this with Mr. Kennedy? Or not? Like, if we, so, you know, I just want to understand, what are we saying? I don't want to, 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 I don't want to enter into an agreement with someone that was worked on by someone else and not have the ability to negotiate for where we stand today. Even the President of the United States has to go back out every four years and, 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 you know, get more. So I do want to understand.
Yes, we.
Yes, sure. Please, yes.
So, uh, uh, first of all, I just, um, I, I really do want to thank everyone tonight uh for coming out and supporting. I, I really do want to thank everyone tonight, uh, for coming out and supporting, um, it means a lot to me. I have been in district eleven years. Uh, I understand that our new board members, uh, I'll be honest with you, the contract, it's not something I negotiated, put there on February first because I knew one day this was gonna happen. It just happened to be in the contract that I signed and we just happened to look at it. Um, so the idea of i- if I'm not renewed, that means I have to look for another job because I can't wait around to, to see if I'm going to be hired. Like I have a wife and three kids, so it's important for me to always be thinking of that. So, um, you know, so that's what, like, when, so when you're telling me you're not renewing me tonight, that means, well, what am I supposed to, how long am I supposed to wait? Uh, months? I don't have that type of time. Um, so that's the first thing. If you say to me, you, um, you're renewing me, then, eh, then we have to negotiate a brand-new contract because my contract is up, uh, as of Ju- uh, July first. So I understand the predicament some of you were in. Um, I know some of you, uh, from around town. Uh, some of you I had as students. Uh, my heart is here in Bogota for the last eleven years. I always said this, I will always be loyal to Bogota as long as Bogota wants me. There are opportunities out there. I have been contacted if I was interested in leaving. Uh, I'm not interested in leaving, but if a decision is made for me to leave, then it's very easy to leave. But my heart is here and this is where I would like to remain because we have done some good things. We're gonna continue doing good things. Uh, and it's everyone working together to make that work. So that's just from my perspective of where I am.
I, I, I like to speak if possible. Uh, Fer, can you hear me?
Yes, Frank.
Um, this is, this is a general message for the public. Um, and, and I want to personally apologize to Mr. Kennedy because, uh, this went from a private matter to a public matter today. Um, and, and it's great to see that peoples are out to support you. But it's also very alarming that somehow, uh, either through board members or any other way, maybe you chose it to be that way. Um, many people knew, uh, what, you know, how, what was about, you know, what's, what's supposedly gonna happen. And it also seems that the public has, uh, much more experience, a knowledge of what was gonna happen because I personally, uh, as I had mentioned, uh, now that this is public at the last meeting. I, I, I think it's a, it's a poor hiring practice. I think that if, if you only have three years or you only have five years to evaluate, uh, you, you should probably go for it and, and, and check it out. And this is nothing against you, Mr. Kennedy. Um, and I'm not also saying this is the decision. I'm just saying that I'm tied between a rock and a hard place because there's been prepared speeches that you know individuals did not prepare once they got the agenda. So there's a whole rally. Um, and it's a typical Bogota way. Um, I have that experience, but the one thing I don't, you know, I, 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 the most that I, the thing that I really do admire, uh, above everyone who spoke, um, is, is the residents. If there was one or five residents versus the one hundred and fifty-five individuals who attended, um, that's important to me because we get voted by the residents to make decisions. We don't get voted, uh, through the teachers. We don't get voted through the directors. Uh, because unfortunately, most of them don't live in Bogota. So they're not equal taxpayers. They're employees of the town. Um, and with that said, they're also all under your jurisdiction and, and so eh, I applaud you for having that kind of following, um, and popularity. Again, it was not, I, I personally don't think this had anything to do with Mr. Kennedy. Um, I felt, I would tell you, I felt, eh, blindsided. I thought that we didn't get the common courtesy. Um, we, we had a meeting, Mr. Kennedy, uh, prior to our swearing-in. Uh, this was never brought up. Uh, the previous board member, one of them said last week that they, they didn't renew you, they were waiting for us, but we didn't have any knowledge. So when was this supposed to come out? Um, you know, and, and I don't encourage any board member or any future elected official by the public who, who, who elects you to lead, uh, to basically make decisions because a group of individuals said, well, I don't understand what you're doing. This is how you should, this is how you should vote because he's done this or that. The other thing, Mr. Kennedy, uh, I appreciate, uh, Amanda bringing up, you know, giving us knowledge of your plans and your actions and where we going in the future. But quite frankly, that's probably the, in my professional world, that's probably the first thing you do with incoming board members. You know, you, you grab a portfolio, you say, this is who I am, this is what I've accomplished, this is what I want to achieve. I need your help, you know, of all of you. And that's, and then we know, we have knowledge, but we simply were blindsided. We had knowledge of nothing other than you have a decision to make and this is pro- this is a decision you should make because that's how last week sounded. Um, so it was very alarming, very concerning. I- i- it was, it was a poor, in my opinion, a poor hiring practice. Why do I say poor? Because I ensure that there's other people in the district, uh, teachers or anyone outside that may want a shot. Again, it was not about you, it was just to standardize the way we see things. And I simply do not agree with the February one, the state recommendation. As Nathaniel said, I know you can negotiate any way, shape or form, but for any member to have accept that, any previous member to have accepted that clause, it was also accepted deliberately so that someone sort of slipped through the cracks. I would say, it's just my personal opinion, because how in the world do you become acquainted and learn in twenty days, in less than twenty days? It's a hard decision. It was eh, you know eh, it's, it's been a hard process. Um, I thank the public, but I think that the public needed to know that if any of you were shamed at your employment, um, with short notices of a write-up and terminated, you would not be happy. And if you were up for running, um, in any other position and someone blindsided, you know, and gave the other person, it's wrong. So that was just what I wanted to say. I don't want to be accused of, because it's very sad. Eh, you know, political reasons, uh, political this, political that. And it's, and it seems very unfortunate that Bogota has been that. Um, with past members, it has been that for many years. And in the little time I've been here, I've seen it. Um, I don't intend to bring politics into our school district because it just dis- it, it disenfranchised the public. And, and, and my children personally. I would also say that on top of those one fifty-five, one hundred fifty-five individuals that showed up, um, it was a lot less that the people who voted us at alarming numbers to, to at least do our due diligence. And I don't know if a lot of people understand what due diligence is, but being blindfolded and throwing a curveball and expecting to hit a home run on your first day of bat, it's not your due diligence. So I'm glad we're having this, this discussion. I'm glad, I, I want to give you a lot of respect, Kennedy, because it takes a lot to sit there and listen to all of this. Um, and I, and I just appreciate everybody and the public, uh, for hearing me out and, and understand why the pressure, as most people would say, of the new members is on us. It is on us because we were the ones blindsided. Thank you.
So I just want to make one comment. The, the date that's in the superintendent's contract was also in the previous superintendent's contract. Like it's not, this is not something new. This is not something that was just thrown in there to, you know, confuse people or whatever. Like what Nathaniel said at the last meeting, it's unusual that you would have so many new board members at the same time that the super contract, superintendent contract is up. But this, this clause that's in the contract was also in the previous superintendent's contract. So when this one was written, it was probably modeled after the last one with just some, you know, benefit changes and stuff, but that date has been in there since I've been on the board.
I, and I appreciate you, Mrs. Lewis. I, I appreciate that, that statement. You know, obviously you know that none of the four of us and personally myself served prior to know that was there.
Right, but I'm saying eh, that's not something that somebody threw in, you know, for political reasons or to con- confuse people or, you know, because people are gonna start in January. So let's make it have to be done by February to trip them up or something like that. It wasn't put in there for that. I don't know why it was in there originally, but I know when I, since I've been on the board with the previous superintendents, that, that clause has been in there.
And, and, and Mrs. Lewis, you made a statement, you don't know why it was there originally. I, I'm glad to hear that just because this is why I believe in my own opinion that we're here today. Because we don't want to maybe make that mistake again. We want to, you know, one of the things Nathaniel, and I'll reiterate, and you're absolutely right. She, uh, she made, our attorney made mention that is unusual for, you know, um, basically a lot of board members to change over. And I've replied, and I think you remember, that that's the problem with politics, usual and customary doing things oh, as always, because no one, I think America is showing us that there's a lot of change going on. Uh, there's a lot of people, new people, young people, inexperienced individuals taking higher office. Um, and, and, and the majority of voters, uh, presidentially came out to prove that. You know, that there's a youth, there's a, there's a different thought that things should not be status quo. So if that's the decision that the previous board decided to take a contract and just replicated with no regard to what it had, is simply not a mistake that I'm willing to do. Because I think of the future, I think of the future, eh, you know, I could say eh, youth that may sit on our, in our position. Or a new mother, a new father, someone in Bogota sitting in our position. Again, it's not about Mr. Kennedy. I just wanted to make clear why I think, why I personally think we're all here. That's all.
Just to go back to that February first date. Frank, you'd understand that, um, as I said, for most of the superintendent contracts, it is not unusual to have from three to six-month, uh, notice provisions. So, eh, that's one factor. The other factor is you're really only talking between February one and April one. I don't know if that sixty days as a new board member elected is all that significant. And the reason that they're not allowed to do it any other way is because there are cases that say that the board that votes on the superintendent that's going to be hired for the following year, which starts your fiscal year, July one, must be the duly-elected board that would be continuing through that new contract. And that's why they, the board members, uh, and I said to you, we had to wait for the election. Years ago, a lot of boards would say, let's not wait for the election because we know the person. The old board who was with Mr. Kennedy for all those years, if it weren't for that law, they probably could have looked at renewing his contract and binding you from October or November of last year. But we couldn't do that and that wouldn't have been the right thing to do. We had to wait for the election. So it's eh, you know, instead of looking at it as being blindsided, what I would say is it's an opportunity. And it's really a matter of, um, looking at it that eh, it's just something that every board faces because there is that limited time period that the contract always must expire on a June thirtieth. You must give them no less than one month for every year of the contract. And of an election now, instead of being in April, keep in mind, the school boards, some of them for I don't know how many years, fifty years were in April. It's only the past five or so years that it's been moved to November so that the board members come on in January. You always, every, the maximum any board member's going to have is from January to March. That's it. For every contract in the state. So I, 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 I just want you to understand that. It's, it, it's not that, that February date is anything unusual. And a lot of times, boards and superintendents like that advanced notice because as I said, it gives both of the parties to either look for another job or be able to get a replacement in exact time for the July one expiration date.
Nathaniel, thank you for that. Um, what I, what I would say to that is seven, nine days is a lot harder than sixty days. I haven't had the opportunity to get to know Kennedy at all and, and, you know, I'm torn apart. Because in the little bit I've been able, I think he's an eh, you know, a really nice person. Um, I don't know his abilities. Um, I just know he's a nice person.
I feel like you've been doing the town a disservice if you don't know his abilities, Frank. I mean, you've been a met, you've been in, I don't know how long you've lived in here, but I, I, I know that you've lived in Bogota at least uh, five years, I think. Uh, and, okay, so, so, so then for you to naively sit there and say that you don't know what Mr. Kennedy has brought to the table and what our other administrators in our school district has brought to the table is, is really disappointing and I'm disappointed that you don't know more.
With all due respect, Amanda, when, when I look at something, I, I, first of all, I think, I think that you don't have to challenge anyone's personal's, uh, agenda or, or how we think. But I gotta tell you, I know what's, what's happened as my children attend in the school district. But I also, one of the things I want to look at is the future. What's the future hold? Because it's eh, eh, what, you're only as good as your last at bat.
So my question, my question that remained unanswered, which I had asked at the beginning of, of my thing was, what do you think a new superintendent would bring to the table that Mr. Kennedy has not already brought to the table? If, if anybody would be kind enough to share what they think someone else outside could bring. And perhaps if we take those ideas that you have of that somebody else could possibly bring and, and pose those ideas to Mr. Kennedy and challenge Mr. Kennedy, then perhaps he would be willing to step up and, and meet that for you guys. I, I just, you know, I, instead of sitting here, I mean, we're going through and, and we're telling you what, what's to come. And it's, it sounds like you're not receiving that information.
To, well, I, I, I promise to answer your question, so I will. I don't, I don't know what someone else would bring. And again, I, I want to, I want to make abundantly clear my position on this. My position on this, as I understood it coming into this evening, before I received an email indicating that this, this part of the conversation would be had in public. My understanding was that we would have a, a similar discussion as we did last weekend. And either way, it doesn't matter to me because I have the same exact questions and the same exact feeling. I have no idea what someone else could or couldn't bring in relationship to what Mr. Kennedy brings because that isn't the context in which I was coming at this. Again, eh, all these folks and yourself made it abundantly clear that this is about Mr. Kennedy's, you know, role here, rather than what I thought we were discussing was Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Kennedy's contract renewal as a process. So for me, it has never been about someone else. There isn't someone in the wings in my mind. There isn't a list of candidates, not at all. There's certainly no way I would have been able to amass such a list from the fifth to today. And, and I did not, and nor did I approach or, or come into this evening with the idea that, that we would have such a spirited discussion because again, for me and speaking only for me, I truly believe that we were going to be talking about this process and whether or not to renegotiate or to, or to possibly seek someone else. This was never for me about it not being about Mr. Kennedy, not at all, not at all. For me, this was about the process. So to answer your question, I don't know what someone else could bring because I hadn't considered anyone else.
Anyone else?
I would like to say something.
Yes, Jose.
First of all, I want to thank the public because as B C said, we wouldn't know what to think of, of Kennedy. Obviously, I've known him for a long time and I have nothing against Mr. Kennedy. Um, as the process looks, I'm trying to understand if we non-renew him, is he completely out of the game? Because as far as I heard, he was still in the running. It's just that we're gonna see other applicants. And that's how I understood the process was. It doesn't mean that he won't be renewed. It just means that we're gonna see other options. Now, eh, eh, it's, it's what I understand. Again, we are new, absolutely. And eh, and again, it is, it is upsetting to be a new board member and not have anyone contact you or even tell you that this was gonna happen until the last meeting that we were here and that we spoke about. This is why we extended it to the next meeting. To give us some time so we can look at the evaluations and eh, whatnot. I saw the evaluations. I have a couple of questions on that. The evaluations are kind of sketchy. I don't know what's going on with them. There's a comment that states that Mr. Kennedy did something on September of twenty twenty, but the, the contract is signed in July. It just doesn't make any sense. Uh, eh, eh, we, we as new board members, we were elected to make a decision, to make a, a very smart and intuitive decision. We need to have all the information before we can even do, make a decision. I would not be, I, I, I don't want to go out in the public and say, listen. I would not be, I, I, I don't want to go out in the public and say, listen, I, I, I voted for him because everyone said he was great and I, and I, no. I need to say, listen, he is the best at this job. But we are new and we don't know what the best is. We are only asking for some time and to see what is out there. I don't know why this got into a mess where Mr. Kennedy is not able to do his job and, and people think that we're trying to to fire him. We're not, we're not trying to fire him. We want to see options. It is not fair that it's February first, but there's nothing we can do about that at this point, I believe. The only thing we could do is either non-renew and, and check other people, which doesn't mean he's going to be fired. And I understand Mr. Kennedy and thank you for being so patient and, and, and listening and talking to us. I, I really, I really want to grasp this and make an, an informative decision. I've seen a couple of things. Um, Mr. Kennedy is not even about your personality because I can sit down and interview you right now and I know you're going to get the job. It's not about you. This is, and, and more than that, it's about the process. The hiring process, it's, it just makes no sense. We need to sit down as a board and recalculate this. As Ms. Lewis said, you had a contract because you copied the first, whatever contract was there when other board members were there. I think that's the mistake. We keep repeating our errors. We need to come in and fix things and change things. I'm not trying to change Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Kennedy is a great man. But we need to check and see what's out there. We need to be very, very diligent at what we're going to choose. Thank you, guys.
Can I say something?
You.
Go ahead, Dalia.
Okay. Taking that into account, we have to keep in mind, Mr. Kennedy, just like he said, I sure wouldn't want to be in the position that he's in. He has a family. He has three kids. He cannot sit around and wait and see, oh, let's see if, if I have the job or not. No, he has to look out for his family. He has to see what's best for him, what's best for his children. And I think it would be very unfair on our part to keep on holding it off and holding it off. We keep on going back and forth. Enough with this. Let's make a decision and that's it. But for the benefit of our children, I mean, take him into account. This is not fair to him. It, it just can't, it can't. Why do we keep on pushing it and pushing it? No, I sure wouldn't want to be in that predicament. I have a family, I have three kids as well, so I strongly understand. And this is just not fair to him.
So you're going on wording of a contract wording that you assume that we went by the last contract? That's not what Eileen said. She said the February first date, okay? We take our job seriously. We didn't just take word, word, and let's put this here, okay? You guys are doing a disservice to this district, okay? I understand you just got on. But again, you guys are parents. If you didn't pay attention this whole election, you should have been at a board meeting, okay?
I take offense to that.
You should have been there. It's by your plan.
Because I'm a parent here. Because my children just landed at that school, I should know his hiring, his capabilities, his skill set. I take offense to that. I think that you make blanket statements as to your opinion and you're entitled to that. But please don't you ever assume to know what I know or don't know or what I would choose to use as a guide to hire someone. My interactions with Mr. Kennedy, with you or anyone else here for that matter, would not be a determining factor alone in how I would choose to hire someone. If that is your opinion, that's fine. I think I've made clear, my only concern here tonight was that the process that is used for Mr. Kennedy and anyone else moving forward is consistent and ethical. And this did not feel so. To sit in a job on January fifth and then be told on January twelfth that we need to decide the fate of a man and his children and his family is unacceptable. It's unacceptable to ask for people to make a decision based on nothing. Those evaluations were not given until we asked for them. So if that's the decision you wanted us to come here with, if that's information you wanted us to know beyond what our interaction with this man in, in the school setting, that's, that's information you should have provided.
Wait, can I say something? I'm not yelling, but how could you say based on nothing? How could you say based on nothing? Wait a minute, let me speak, let me speak.
Go right ahead, please do.
No, I'm going to say, Kathy, based on nothing. What we're saying is what went on the last three years. This is what I'm saying. Pre-K program, okay, BC? This is the things I'm talking about. I'm not putting you down, but what I'm saying is the things that were brought to the district, okay? That's what I'm saying. You guys say you don't.
So we, we, we went to take those accomplishments that we are all as residents aware of. And we were not to consider, do what we even made aware that if, if there was anything in opposition of, 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 of Mr. Kennedy? No, we weren't, until these good people came forward tonight and expressed their feelings. We, we were left with, this is what we have to do and we have to do it tonight, guys. Because if we don't do it tonight, February first, it automatically renews. That, I'm sorry, I said it last week and I'll say it again. That's unacceptable to ask someone to do that. Basically, yes, I know what this district has, has changed to and accomplished, and we said that. We said that last week. We're all aware of that. What we were not aware of was his professional evaluations. We were, we had zero commentary from anybody other than the three, the four of you or five of you, I'm sorry, who were here last year. That's all we had to go on. So please, and, and for folks making comments, it's all to the same, that we're parents here, we should know that. Yeah, I know lots of things that I've heard, but none of that was a part of any professional process that was given to us. That's the point we're making here. This process was wrong. You asked, you said swear in, we swear to do the right thing by the people of Bogota. Then we sit down here, make this magnanimous decision based on what? Our opinion of this man and just that? I don't agree with that. And no one is saying, and for George Vasquez, where's the five minutes? I don't know, George. Maybe it's in the comments that are, are not nice and don't, don't have much to do with this process. That's what I'm looking to get at. How do we fix this so that we don't land here again in three years with potentially four other people unaware that they have this big thing sitting there waiting for them?
The way to address the process is we put a motion on the floor to non-renew. We need five votes to do so. We take that action. Mr. Kennedy is advised by, in writing. And we have our time to do this properly and for you all to get the knowledge you want. And note to the comments on this, on the chat, I don't have a hidden agenda. There's only partial, partial comments coming out tonight, but we could be here for days, so.
The other option is we don't have to make a, a motion at all and we renegotiate Mr. Kennedy's contract and go forward. There's no motion, you don't have to make a motion at all tonight. We can just, we could just make a, uh, I don't, actually, I don't know. Do we have to make a motion to renegotiate his contract? Or we just make an agreement that we would like to renegotiate his contract? Um, I don't know if Nathaniel could offer some advice on that.
The process is that, as pretty much Kathy said, if you are going to non-renew the contract, then you're saying to Mr. Kennedy, it's over. And whatever else you want to mutually agree on how you're going to, uh, go about having a superintendent as of July one, that's up to the board. If you take no action, what you're basically saying is we would like Mr. Kennedy to stay. And I know Mr. Kennedy would be more than interested in staying and negotiating a new contract with terms that are, uh, within the parameters that the law allows us. As I indicated, the, the, the way a superintendent's contract is written these days, very little is really negotiable. Yes, you could go down to an April one notice date instead of a February one notice date. I don't think that would be a deal breaker for anybody. Um, as far as everything else is in there, it's very, I mean, it's a matter of public record. Anybody could read it, and I'm sure some of you have read that. There's not much in a superintendent's contract um, that to be negotiated beyond salary and benefits. You know, that everything else is pretty statutory. But the, that, that's the process. If the board doesn't vote to, uh, non-renew, then you would renew with the opportunity to negotiate a new contract. You would write up that contract. It would have to be submitted to the county office for approval and then the board would vote to approve it.
I just said, if you renew it and you guys are on, you guys change the process. See, I, I see what you're saying. Then you guys sit and we work as a board and we change the process for the next, next three years or whatever. But, you know, I'm sorry that you took it the wrong way. I apologize, but I, I really would like to say, let's change the process. You see, you know, we have to work together. I get it, but I really would hate to see you leave. I mean, it, he, he's a, he's wonderful, the district. And I think we should work with him and let's change the process. Change the wording, let's look over the contract and see where it went wrong. But I, I really wish that you guys would really keep this, I, I, I can't say enough about him.
Lisa, I, I owe you an apology because it is not my way to raise my voice to that level at all. Uh, offense or not, or none. It is not my, my way to do such a thing and I want, I owe you an apology. I raised my voice in public and I have no problem apologizing.
No, I'm fine. And I, DC, I have no issues with you or anybody. I'd just say, let's change the process and let's renew him and work on a contract that's suitable for everybody. And would suitable for this district and the children. That's what's most important.
Well, where does that leave us?
I'd like to make a motion to renew Mr. Kennedy's contract.
I can the motion based on the, the negotiation.
Yes. Motion on the floor, the discussion. All right, just so everyone's aware, if this goes through, um, the door is closed. Were any further, uh, looking at, at any other options as far as to the superintendent will be? All right, no more discussion? Please be aware of what you're voting for. This is to renew Mr. Kennedy's contract um, without the opportunity to.
Kathy, the motion, no, the motion was to renew Mr. Kennedy's contract, which would be a
Yes.
year contract, subject to further negotiations of the terms.
Okay, thank you. Jose? Jose, sorry, Jose. Ervin, would you all the roll? This is a motion to renew.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda? Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Mondkamer?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Racket?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanburn?
No.
With the majority, motion carried.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for, for listening and I really appreciate the, the open and honest discussion that we can have. And, and it feels good to have this. This, I know, I know it's, it's, it's tough to, you know, but one, I just appreciate everybody and I know that we're going to do really good things moving forward.
I agree with everybody.
All right, um, if there's no more discussion?
I would, I would like to point out that, you know, this, this was a positive uh, discussion. It, I think it's always necessary to see where we're moving forward. And it's also a message, um, that we're just, you know, for those who voted for us from the public, we're, we're simply not going to take the pass as a yes. We're going to challenge it. We're going to look for various ways. And we're going to stay on our toes because that also drives a message to our superintendent that we expect to say, that we, we want him to give us the best. We want him to, you know, make us competitive. And they will support him in any way, shape or form. Because that's the bottom line here. If we do not challenge the pass, that could have been any nonsense, any slip by, anything else. So I'm sure there's a lot of policies, a lot of things. You, you, the current board members, aside from us, you come across your desk and you wonder, when was this enacted, right? So at the end of the day, it, it's just, we're going to continue to challenge. We're going to give our voters that, you know, that basically, we're going to reiterate, we're going to reciprocate for them, that everything will be challenged that comes to our table. Uh, we're not just going to take yes for an answer. That seems to be a very customary thing in town. And we're not going to do that. Uh, and I say we because now I see that there was more than myself. Um, so thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, challenge us, challenge the students, challenge everyone. Thank you.
Again, I just want to thank everyone for their, um, their comments and for the board. For having confidence in me moving forward. I do look forward to, uh, working with everyone. And again, this is a, a big team effort from top to bottom. Uh, and input is needed from everyone and, uh, moving forward. Uh, I just look forward to the challenge and, you know, what we can accomplish the next couple of years together should be great.
Thank you. Congratulations, Amy.
Thank you.
All righty, if there's nothing on the floor? I may have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Amanda.
And Amanda, any discussion?
Have a great week.
No.
Yes, everybody. All in favor?
Good night.
Thank you.
I cut that in. Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Thank you to the community for all your comments, they're greatly appreciated.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.